All right, good afternoon, everyone. I am Jason Winston, Chair of the Community Development Human Services Committee. I call today's regular committee meeting to order for Tuesday, September the ninth, 2025. I am joined by my colleagues. To my right, we have Councilmember Norwood. To my immediate left, we have Vice Chair Jason Dozier. And to his left, we have Councilmember Matt Westmoreland. This does constitute a quorum, so I will make a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second? We have a second by Dozier. If he can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. The agenda is adopted.
Thank you, colleagues. You've had a chance to look over the meeting minutes from our previous committee meeting, so I will make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Dozier, if he can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. The minutes are approved.
Thank you. This does take us to the public comment section of our agenda today. I will remind our speakers that you will have three minutes, and then we will, I will do a gentle reminder, just to let you know when time is almost up. Our first speaker is Henry Jordan.
Giving our discreet God to everyone that's here. God forbid, yea, let God be true and every man a liar. As it is written, that thou mightest be justified in thy saying, and mightest overcome when thou art judged. Romans 3:4 verse. Let God be true refers to God's keeping His promises to Israel. Jesus' word created the income. Thinking no both obey Him, not you or myself. Let favor be shown to the wicked, yet will he not learn righteousness. In the land of uprightness will he deal, unjustly, and will not behold the majesty of the Lord. Isaiah 26:10 verse. The call to God expresses both David's trust and its human weakness. They will receive God's testisment. Will you? When you don't, then you ask for death, James Smith and others. Then He will grant you according to the riches of His glory, to be strengthened with might by His Spirit in the inner man. Ephesians 3:3, chapter 16, verse. That they would strengthen with might by His Spirit. That is, that they be divinely enabled to successfully live the Christian life. But whosoever deny me before me, and then will I also deny before my Father, which is in heaven. Matthew 10:33 verse. Confess me means acknowledge that you belong to me. In reality, secret discipleship is a practical impossibility. When you ask me to deny what Jesus has done through me, then you told Christ, you do not deserve the gift, the work, not me. God did it for His glory. When somebody else take glory for what Christ has done in me, then I'm giving it to somebody else who don't deserve it. But Christ deserves the glory of what He do in me and in you, if you doing what He says to do. Christ got more for us than we got for ourselves, and I need what Christ has for me. What about you?
Thank you. And we've been joined by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond. Our next speaker is Ethan Drakes. You have three minutes.
How you guys doing? Thank you for having me. I'm trying to make it hard for you guys to say no. My name's Ethan Drakes. I'm the owner of Momo Bros. Bodega. I started off with my little brother who goes to Morris Brown, hence the Momo Bros. It's a food truck, and we're opening up a corner store. If you're familiar with the Busy Bees location, I'm right next to her. I started off in my dorm. Being from Brooklyn, we got corner stores all over the place, and the corner stores in Atlanta, they don't have food. They got gambling machines and just junk, and not having a car on campus, and so only Waffle House or Cookout after a certain time. So food is unhealthy, and it's hard to get to. Walmart just recently opened, so the West End, it was really a food desert, and we were feeling that a lot. So in terms of community impact, what I'm trying to do is bring a full-fledged corner store to 806 MLK, right next to Busy Bees, and I'm asking for funding from the Community Development Grant to help me do that. I've been, oh, I'm getting a little nervous. The idea is accessibility to the students. If you're familiar with the location, it's walking distance from all four schools, because Morris Brown is on the rise. I want to partner with the schools. I'm already partnered with my food truck. I go, if you're familiar with the Hump Wednesdays, on Morehouse, I do those. Market Fridays, I'm working on getting into that at Spellman. And last Homecoming, I did a food drive with Morris Brown. So as a student, I'm involved in the Student Affairs, and there's just the position of representation. You know, going to Morehouse, coming to the AUC, seeing students of my age and stature, being able to do big things, put a battery in my back. So I'm asking you guys to help put me into position, because naturally, it takes a village, and you guys are in the perfect position to put me in position to help other people out. So that's less of a pitch, just to let you know, I'm gonna be here. I would like your help, but in God's name, I'll do it myself. But, you know, the grant would help. So thank you, guys, and yes, I pass out these pamphlets.
We have them up here, but I'll just say, you know, congratulations on starting your business. Kudos to you for coming in and making your pitch. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Dozier.
I appreciate you, man.
Thanks so much for sharing, and I just want to say, so both Morehouse and Morris Brown are in my district, as well as the location that you're talking about, right next to Busy Bees. I know our law department, it's alarm bells ringing about gratuities clause and things like that, so the city council in City of Atlanta can't provide direct assistance to small businesses. However, I would love to talk with you about some resources that are out there for small businesses. I'm gonna wait until we get quorum, so that when I step away and talk with you on the side, that we don't lose quorum, but still stay put, but I want to definitely talk with you more and make sure you get my information.
All right, I appreciate you, man.
Thank you. And I'm sure he will add this in your conversation, but I would just add that you should probably also reach out to Invest Atlanta about opportunities they might have.
Okay, I appreciate it.
All right. Our next speaker is Nikki Bugs, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
No, good afternoon, okay. Thank you. All right, let's talk about car rental. So when you rent a car, and you're on vacation, you handle that car the way you would not handle your car. You may not put the best gas in it, you may drive it a little bit more excitingly than you would drive your car, and typically how you would take care of your car, right? And then you turn the car back in, back to the dealership. This is how we're being handled at the Landmark condominium. We're being handled, this is our resident, and people are coming in and staying in the building, and it's being treated as a hotel. The building's not designed for hotelship, something I've mentioned multiple times, it's just not designed for it. The building's not designed for it. It has nothing to do with an age thing. It has to do with that the building is not designed for hotelship. There are regulations, rules, protocols that go into place regarding said building. A previous board filed a suit regarding what this current board is doing. Real estate agents on that board listed as a cash cow, a juggernaut, an investment property, but it's our home. It's where we live. And every day, day in and day out, we have transient people, all kinds of people. The doors are broken, we're no longer safe. A former employee that worked for this investor group said that BS walks, money talks. The investor manager, the investor president, will get that building. So obviously, they know something that we're unaware of. In conjunction with gutting the building from the inside out, it's constant construction and building out units, so that it would house multiple people inside of the building. Let's not forget Surfside, and my friend's grandparents that were crushed to death in that building in Florida. Let's not forget it. It doesn't mean that it has to happen on sand. It could happen anywhere. And as I said, it may not affect you, because it's not in your backyard or not in your homes, but it's our home, and we're one of your constituents. I at least one of them. If you don't care about me, please think about the seniors and the other people that live in the building. There should be preservations placed over buildings over a certain age. There's systematic and intentional distress being caused to the building, because they want the building. There's excessive fines, fees, assessments, HOAs, $1,300 a month for nothing to count for, but water, gas, we have no amenities. Let the world know that this is where we are, that this has been a complaint that's been going on for over four years, and Atlanta has yet to do anything about it. If anything happens to me, I get sick, I die, I become incapacitated, I disappear. Let the world know that we did complain about this, and you failed to act. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add that it has been brought to my attention that Airbnb has severed ties with Alula Homes, who operates at Landmark. I don't have any details, but you maybe can go talk to Councilmember Bakhtiari to get more details about that.
We heard something similar a while ago back. Thank you for mentioning that, but they're still operating. So it's not even the severing tie. I know, I understand. So it's not even the severing ties, and I understand that, but no one's holding anyone accountable. And as we speak, I have a unit that has now four units.
Just wanted to give you that information, because I don't have anything else to add to that, but as soon as we find out something, I'm sure someone that represents that district can probably.
Hopefully, there'll be some people left by the time they figure it out. Thank you for that bit of advice.
All right, thank you. Thanks, everyone who came today for public comment. That does end that section. We did have two presentations today, but due to an illness, we won't only be having one today, so we will try to reschedule the Atlanta Continuum of Care quarterly update. But we do have the Department of City Planning quarterly update. We'll welcome up Commissioner Prince.
I am joined today by all of my subject matter experts from the Department of City Planning. Wave. Yeah. So that way, if you have very specific questions, I will have answers for you. So summer's coming to a close here, and I want you to know that the Department of City Planning was not on vacation. We have been very busy, and I'd like to show you what we've been up to and how it aligns with our core values, if I am able to advance the slides. No? It's on. Okay, there we go. The work we do to design in Atlanta for all is guided by our core values of equity, nature, ambition, progress, and access, and I've structured our presentation around that. Next slide, please. I don't know if that was me or y'all. DCP is working on several initiatives that advance equity in Atlanta's neighborhoods. These should all be familiar to you. Next slide, please. Since the city council adopted Plan A, our CDP, in July, we've started making progress towards implementing the plan. I think you all remember, in the CDP meetings, we talked about how, after we finished the process of Plan A, of the Comprehensive Development Plan, that we would take a deep dive into some of our neighborhoods, and to that end, we're working out the list of neighborhoods. So far, we have the neighborhood around the Ashbeem Marta Station, for which we received an LCI grant from the Atlanta Regional Commission. We are continuing our work around the Lindbergh Marta Station. We are looking at participating in some neighborhood-driven plans, Peachtree Park and Edgewood. They've started their own planning efforts, and we are participating by sitting on their steering committee to help guide the planning process. We're also going to select a neighborhood in one of the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative areas, but we haven't figured out which one yet. And we will be working with ATL DOT on their comprehensive transportation plan, because you know that land use and transportation planning go together. So we're going to bring our expertise from Plan A and help them out, maybe pay them back for some of the help they gave us in our process, because there was a lot of staff time that went into that. I'd like to call your attention to this slide on the upper right corner, where it says, "Plan A, Atlanta for All." You see that tagline? We're going to put that on all of the work that we do that is associated with the Comprehensive Development Plan, so you can see that it's an outgrowth of that plan and it's part of it. Whenever you see this in a presentation or future materials, you'll know that it's connected to the CDP. So what else have we been doing? We've had our third Affordable Housing Week. It was very successful. We had over 76 people attending each day. People came to learn more about workforce housing, financing for that, maximizing undervalued land for affordable housing, environmental assessments, and how to engage neighborhoods. NPU University continues. This summer, we had our Civic Responsibility for Young Leaders program. We had over 600 people, 600 high school students, apply to be part of this program, and we selected 27 participants. For two weeks, these students worked very hard to learn all about city government, and they earned a whole lot of community service hours while they did it. More than 40 members of the city staff participated in this training. It was really good for the students, and we're really proud to contribute to the mayor's Year of the Youth programs. Every year is the Year of the Youth. Our Community Leadership Institute is a partnership with Clark Atlanta University to help leadership development for neighborhood leaders. 25 residents were selected to be part of this program out of 200 applicants. Classes began this past Saturday, and so we've got a really good group here that we hope will become involved in more of our planning efforts as we go forward. Of course, everyone knows, we've been working on our tree protection ordinance, and it is the key to preserving one of our most valuable natural assets, our tree canopy. As you know, the Tree Protection Ordinance amendments will go into effect on January 1st, and we're getting ready for that right now. David Zabaranek is working with the staff to train them on how to implement the changes to the tree protection ordinance. The Tree Protection Ordinance offers discounts for affordable housing construction, a mechanism to help low-income seniors remove dead, dying, and hazardous trees from their property. There's $400,000 set aside for this effort. And remember, there's a registry for the tree professionals to make sure that we've got the best companies operating in our city. We're working on a couple of other related initiatives. I think I've told you all about the Urban Forestry Master Plan that we're working, we're working together with the Department of Parks and Recreation on this. Since 2020, DCP has collaborated with the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Conservation Fund to purchase over 400 acres of forested land for permanent preservation. So forested land is something that's over 80% wooded, right? The Conservation Fund recently purchased 30 forested acres on Nancy Creek in Buckhead with contributions from the Tree Trust Fund. Fundraising is underway for the city to take ownership of the site. This is very exciting news. The Urban Forest Master Plan is funded by a U.S. Forest Service grant, and it will include an inventory of the city-owned trees in the right-of-way, the street trees, restoration of 120 forested acres, natural area assessments, and ways for the public to interact with the natural environment. Ambition means we envision neighborhoods, transit, housing, and public spaces that reflect Atlanta's greatness. What you see before you is Chattahoochee Riverlands. That's the area that contains the Chattahoochee Brick Site and the nearby properties that make up all of the Riverlands. This stretches across a lot of neighborhoods in northwest Atlanta, and we received an EPA brownfield cleanup grant in fiscal year '23, $2 million for the cleanup of this site. Now Chattahoochee Brick, the development of this park, of this green space, is expected to have a regional and national impact. It's just that big. After a long stretch of getting all of the pieces in place, the procurement is now complete, and we are ready to get started with SCAPE, our consultant for the project. They are a nationally known planning and design firm. There will be lots of opportunities for community engagement. There will be guidance and feedback that we will get from the Chattahoochee Brick Company So I mentioned the small area plans to you. Here is the Ashbeem Marta Station grant, or Ashbeem Marta Station Plan. We got a grant from ARC for this. Guided by Plan A's ambition to enhance mobility, the Ashbeem Marta Station Connectivity Study is going to be one of our small area planning studies, and you can see the ATL, or Atlanta for All, tag in that lower-left corner, so you'll know that it's part of it. We're looking forward to working with a diverse set of partners, both internal and external, regarding transportation, historic preservation, incorporating principles from the Main Street Approach, and economic development. We're going to be working with all of the surrounding neighborhoods and the NPU, so that's going to be K, L, and T. Access is really just connection to opportunity, and Atlanta's strength depends on how easily residents can connect to opportunities and allow them to thrive. Ah, the Lindbergh Marta Station. This is another one of our small area studies. You've probably heard about the Lindbergh Armor Master Plan. It was on hold for a while, but we're back to it now. Ensuring residents can reach jobs, housing, and services is the primary focus of this plan, another small planning area. Now, the study area includes 11 neighborhoods, NPU's BE&amp;F, and Beltline Area, SubArea 7, so you can see there's a lot of people coming together for this one. The project plan, which will be developed in connection with Marta, will address conceptual plans for the Marta Annex Site and South Bus Loop, and an urban design framework to patch and stitch the core focus area, the area that's shaded on the map. You see that? For us, progress means turning vision into action with intention and integrity. Okay, so zoning 2.0. The new zoning ordinance is one of the primary ways we will implement the Comprehensive Development Plan. The CDP, Plan A, is the plan, and the zoning ordinance is the legal tool that implements the plan. So we have a draft. Hope you've all had a chance to just take a look, give us some feedback. We've got the team working on testing this. You're probably wondering, what does testing the zoning ordinance mean? It means the plans that we receive and regular applications that we get every month, we're going to evaluate them based on what's in the new zoning ordinance. And we're going to look very closely at, do we get the same result from these rules as opposed to the rules that we already have on the books? Are we getting what we want, what we envisioned in the plan? Now, I've mentioned to you a couple times that the Tree Protection Ordinance has to be tied to the zoning ordinance. So we've got our Arborist team, David and Kathy, want to wave? There we go. Working on this committee, testing the zoning ordinance, because what they're doing is they are looking at every single zoning district, every new zoning district that's proposed in the zoning ordinance, to see how much of the lot is allowed to be covered by buildings plus pavement. The area that is left over is the area that is available for tree preservation and for planting. So we're evaluating this, so that we can come up with even more amendments to the zoning ordinance that will require preservation and planting, and that will incentivize preservation and planting. And this is something that we haven't done in the city before. So this is going to be a slightly longer process, and it will take place as the zoning ordinance is being tested, and will end up, after y'all have adopted the zoning ordinance, bringing back some changes to you. Now, in the meantime, we might bring you corrections to Scrivener errors or something like that, but the substantive work will be taking place at the same time as the zoning ordinance testing, and will continue on after the zoning ordinance testing is completed. ordinance testing, and will continue on after the zoning ordinance testing is completed. So here are the usual metrics that you're used to seeing, and I didn't want to get bogged down in this because there's not a whole lot of change. After the pandemic, you know, we had kind of a surge in our permitting, but we're leveling off right now. So things are holding steady, and there really aren't any surprises, but the team is here to answer questions if you want to ask a question about one of these four slides, and I have them full-size at the end if you want to look at them more closely. One thing we're really excited about is implementing OPAL permitting and licensing. It's part of the Oracle suite that we use throughout the city. It's, the finance department and other departments use it, and there's a module for permitting that is really great that we'll be implementing. To that end, we have hired a new data and strategy director, Lauren Lackey. Lauren, there she is, who is going to be in charge of this transition to OPAL. The great thing about OPAL permitting and licensing is it allows a lot of reporting. It has a lot of functions that our current software doesn't have, so this will be great for when I come to report to you guys. I can answer all those really detailed questions. And that concludes our update. The whole team is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Prince. We do have some questions from colleagues. I'll start with Councilmember Dozier, but just want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmember Bond as well as Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good to see you as always, Commissioner Prince. First question is a quick question, just with the city council redistricting that's coming up pretty soon. I feel like myself and all of our other district colleagues that have some shifting boundaries have gotten a lot of questions from constituents either related to issues that aren't in our current districts or issues that will be in our future districts. And I know DCP used to maintain a find-your-council-person portal online, and as far as I could tell, is no longer accessible. Any updates on that or how constituents or general public can get information about redistricting, considering we're coming around a corner for that?
One of the first conversations I had with our new data and strategy director was about the work we need to do to our website. This is on our to-do list, checking that and making sure that we have everything that we need. So this will be something that we should be able to up you, update you on very soon.
Okay. Like I said, I get a lot of his constituent emails. I get a lot of emails from some of my folks who are going to District 11, District 10, so the sooner we can get that information to our constituents, the better. My only other question is just with regards to, I've seen a lot of reporting around the ARC study for passenger rail in downtown. I know the City of Atlanta is partnering with ARC. Is DCP the lead agency within the City of Atlanta working with ARC on that, or is that Department of Transportation?
It's not us.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And Mr. Chair, you?
All right. Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for your wonderful report. I have an issue for follow-up with you and the Law Department. When we were completing the, I guess, the latest iteration of the tree ordinance a few months ago, I believe I introduced a paper to move the consulting with the arborists to the beginning of the process. And so to codify those rules, I need to get with someone in your department and the Law Department, because the Law Department doesn't have the insight into what would be required to make that happen. And so I wanted to put that on the table, so I'm going to be asking you who in your department we need to get with so that we can make sure that that is at the front of the process for people, whether it's an affordable housing developer, whomever, who's trying to develop in Atlanta, so that they can meet with the arborists and have that expectation of what their costs may be for development.
Councilmember Bond, David Zabranek just came up to tell me that we are already implementing.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So you know about our Concept Review Committee, right? So when you have a development that you're going to submit for rezoning or for a building permit, you will come to the Concept Review Committee, and at that point, you get to hear from the entire team. They look at your plans, and they give you feedback. So what we've done is we've moved the arborist, and here's one of them right now, the arborist is participating in those meetings, and David, you want to give a little more info?
Sure. Hello, my name is David Zabranek, Arbor Culture Manager. This was implemented on July 7th, and what we are doing is we are notifying any applicant that if they're proposing to destroy any trees, then they must have an arborist pre-application meeting. So then they, and I'm kind of giving you the nitty-gritty just to let you know what we're doing, but they contact the arborist division, ask for, to be scheduled for a meeting, and so we hold the meetings on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We give them the information in a form to let them know what's required to have the meeting, which includes a tree protection plan. So they fill out part of the form, and then the arborist plan reviewer completes the rest of the form after the meeting. So we go over tree protection and trying to protect more trees, you know, at the point before they even submit. And all this meeting, and this meeting is, does occur prior to them submitting any drawings to the Office of Buildings to create a BB number, which means it's a permit application. So we've been doing this since July 7th.
Oh, that's excellent news, because I've been getting questions from activists and, I guess, potential developers alike, wondering what we were going to, I guess, comb through and make it more, I guess, understandable or clearer for them in the code, so it sounds like it's not necessary now. Would you agree, Madam Lawyer?
Good afternoon. Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. As stated, I think you're absolutely right. This is something that the Department of City Planning has most purview and insight concerning, and so I would defer to yourself as the author of this potential policy change, as well as the Department of City Planning, as to whether or not, you know, any sort of change at this point is necessary, but I'd take the Department of City Planning if there were that, based on that, what they're implementing, that that would accomplish your policy aims.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, but just to follow up with you all, is there, do you have it in writing somewhere that it can be shared? Because I'm, because my name was on the paper and...
We can send you the three documents that we, I can send you the three documents that we send to the applicant, which is the form that has to be filled out. It's a checklist as well as a PowerPoint presentation or a slide deck that kind of, that we've developed that goes into the real nitty-gritty of how you show what's required on a tree protection plan, like you have to show trees, you have to show critical root zones, you have to do this, you have to do that. So we give them as much information upfront before they bring a drawing to us, and then during the meeting, the tree protection plan that they send us is put on the, on the screen. Most of these, or if not all of these meetings, have been held on Teams, so the drawing is on the screen, and the plan reviewer, and the applicant, and the applicant's team discuss, you know, the project, with the intention of, you know, doing what can be done to protect trees.
That is absolutely fantastic. So yes, if you could send it to me so I can share with those who make the inquiries to myself and others, I would really, really appreciate it, and thank you very much for taking the initiative from what we did a few months ago. So that's really, really good news, and I'm glad to hear it.
You're very welcome.
All right. I withdraw, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Bakhtiari.
First of all, thank you so much for all the work you all have done. I actually just have a quick niche question. It's actually about DDH trees and nuisance trees. Do we currently have a policy for properties that, because I've noticed that the arborist division is doing fantastic, but we have a number of issues that keep popping up with negligent property owners who have been warned about their trees while those trees are still dropping very dangerous limbs on their property, and I was just curious if we have any policies on the book for nuisance property owners. And I also want to take this opportunity to give a shout-out to Peter Stovall, who has been doing an excellent job trying to track down a lot of these people.
He sure has. I think I'm going to need to call David back up here.
Oh, come on, David. And then, Kied, I have a question for you about sidewalks. I'm kidding.
I'm sorry, I was, I was a little distracted. I didn't actually hear your entire question. If you could repeat it, please.
David.
Sorry.
No worries at all. I was asking about DDH nuisance trees, so I was saying that Peter's done a great job of trying to track down these negligent property owners, but we do have a couple of situations where I have property owners that have been told that they have issues or refusing to deal with it while their trees are still dropping large limbs. Recently had a situation where a limb from a DDH tree dropped on the neighbor's property and almost took out, their child was playing on the playground, and they almost, it was almost a very, very serious incident, but the individual keeps dodging our code enforcement, like attempting to serve, and he very well knows that there's this problem on his property.
So we are working with DPR on, on some of these, and whenever we are unable to get in touch with somebody, because in a lot of cases, there really isn't anybody to be in touch with because they're an absentee owner, they don't respond, or they don't have the resources.
Or like this gentleman, he likes to just sit in his house while you knock on the door and not answer.
Well, when we can find somebody, we can issue, we can work with the zoning department or zoning enforcement team, which is Troy Smith and them, and ask them to issue a citation to the property owner, so.
So again, but my question stands, and I know state law says that something has to happen in order for us to go in and do something, but if it is a situation, do we not have something called a DDH-nuance tree that would allow us to go onto the property and remove the tree despite the, if the citations aren't working, and we know that it's only a matter of time before this tree falls and potentially hurts a child or a family, is there nothing that we can do preemptively, nothing that grants us that ability in an emergency situation?
The tree ordinance allows Department of Parks and Recreation to go on the property to mitigate.
That's understood, and that goes into effect, and the new tree ordinance is the one we currently have?
It's in the current and in the proposed, or in the new, the current and new ordinance.
We seem to be spinning our tires on a particular case, so is it best to follow up with you all outside of this? Great, I will do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, Councilmember Norwood.
Yes, I want a copy of everything you're sending to Michael Che and Bond. Please, David. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions coming from colleagues? We have been joined by Councilmember Andrea Boone. Just wanted to thank you all for your quarterly update. I did have one question. I know that we typically, in the past, have seen statistics around permitting response times, and I was just curious, just are we seeing a great improvement over, and I know over the last year, that's been something you've been really paying attention to?
I can get all of that information to you. I don't have it with me.
Okay, that's fine. We would love to have a follow-up on that.
Happy to do that.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in for your update. So next, this takes us to Communications.
Section G, Communications, 25C 0105, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Bentina Terry to serve as a member of the Atlanta Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for the City of Atlanta. This appointment is for a term of five years.
Good. We have a motion to hold by Wes Morland, a second by Councilmember Bakhtiari. If you could please open the vote.
The vote is closed, seven yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number two, 25C 0106, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. Matt Bronfman to serve as a member of the Atlanta Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for the City of Atlanta. This appointment is for a term of five years.
Mr. Bronfman, if you don't mind coming to the podium, telling us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this appointment?
Sure. Pleasure to be here. Very interesting. I've been an Atlanta resident for over 30 years. I've always been interested in affordable housing. I am, in my day job, I'm CEO of Jamestown Properties, and I've through various communications with Courtney English and others, I have been saying, well, how about this? How about that? To create more affordable housing, and I think they got tired of my comments and said, well, why don't you join the Housing Authority to share some of your views?
Awesome. Any questions, comments from colleagues? A motion to approve by Councilmember Wes Morland, a second by Dozier. If you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, seven yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you. Congratulations.
That takes us to Section H, ordinances for first reading. Item number three, 25O 1510, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the Department of Grants and Community Development to amend the 2018 and 2019 Community Development Fund budgets for the purpose of reprogramming funds from past award programs in an amount not to exceed $200,000.00 to amend the Own Call Entitlement Program Specialist for Federal Entitlement Grants Agreement with Con Ressnick. To add these reprogrammed funds, all contracted work shall be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes. Item number four, 25O 1511, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to exercise the first option to renew the services agreement with Atlanta Beltline for one year, for a one-year term, beginning July 20 of 2025 and ending July 19, 2026, with one additional one-year renewal option remaining. To authorize an amendment to the executed agreement to increase the amount to, not to exceed $1,050,000.00, to provide for the continued maintenance, design, construction, renovation, and repair of certain parks and green spaces where park property is procured, leased, and/or managed by the city that are located, at least in part, within the Beltline Tax Allocation District on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation and for other purposes. That takes us to Section I, ordinances for second reading. Item number five, 25O 1487, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the Department of Grants and Community Development to amend the 2021 Home Investment Fund budget to accept additional funds for the home investment partnerships from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development through the American Rescue Plan by adding to anticipations and appropriations in an amount not to exceed $11,922.00 to provide assistance to vulnerable citizens with housing, shelter, and case management services and for other purposes.
Thank you. Tell us a little bit about this unallocated funds that we are able to use now?
Good afternoon. Genevieve Jones, Director of Entitlement and Competitive Compliance. So we received a letter from HUD stating that due to an administrative error, they calculated incorrectly on the amount of funds that the city was allocated for the Home American Rescue Plan grants. So they did include an additional $11,000, and this ordinance is just to add that to the city's budget.
All right. Any questions, comments from colleagues? I'll make a motion to approve, a second by Bakhtiari. If you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, seven yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, 25O 1488, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to create a public tree recompense project account number within the Oracle financial system for the purpose of receiving funds in accordance with the City of Atlanta's Tree Protection Ordinance recompense payment requirements and for other purposes.
Thank you. Is David still here?
Yep.
There. Sorry, didn't see you hiding over there in the corner. Just tell us a little bit... Just tell us a little bit.
Sure. So I don't, so back in March, there was a little bit of an amendment to the Tree Protection Ordinance about public trees. I don't remember what the legislation number is, but there was some public comment around that time about wanting from tree advocates who want recompense collected for healthy trees being removed off of public property to only be used for things like purchasing forested land, planting trees, that kind of thing, meaning don't, we don't want to be buying pencils with them, you know, we don't buy signs with them. It's specifically for those purposes. So creating this account just allows the city to track that money, and then whenever it's spent, it's spent on what is, is, is being asked.
All right, good. Questions come in, seeing none? Motion to approve by Bond, second by Norwood. If you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, seven yeas, zero naes. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number seven, 25O 1489, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to adopt the 2026 through 2030 capital improvements element, which includes capital improvements that the city intends to fund and hold or in part with the development impact fees in compliance with the requirements of the Georgia Development Impact Fee Act and for other purposes.
Mr. Hunter.
Good afternoon, Chair Winston and members of the Community Development Human Services Committee. My name is Rasheen Hunter, Development Impact Fee Program Manager with the Department of City Planning. This legislation before you today is the adoption of the 2026-2030 Capital Improvement Element. These exhibits have previously come before you as a resolution to transmit to the Atlanta Regional Commission and the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Both agencies have completed their review and comment period, provided their approval, and given us the green light to proceed with adoption. Adoption of the CIE is required by October 31st each year to maintain our qualified local government status. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments?
Second.
Motion to approve by, I think it was Bakhtiari, and second by Dozier. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero naes. This item is favorable.
All right, thank you. And I know you put a lot of work in on this, lots of meetings with each and other, so just appreciate all your hard work on this. All right, thank you.
That takes us to item number eight, 25O 1490, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year 2026 Department of City Planning General Fund Budget and the fiscal year 2026 Capital Finance Fund Budget by transferring an amount not to exceed $450,000.00 by anticipating and appropriating funds to and from the accounts listed herein for the purpose of project work related to the Riverlands Corridor Chattahoochee Brick Company Design Planning efforts and for other purposes.
Thank you. We have a request to hold this item, so I'll make a motion to hold. It was second by Bakhtiari. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero naes. This item is held. That takes us to number nine. If there's no objection from the committee, can we take items nine and 10 as a block?
Proceed.
Item number nine, 25O 1491, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to adopt the Piedmont Park Master Plan as the City of Atlanta's Master Plan for Piedmont Park to incorporate the Piedmont Park Master Plan into the City of Atlanta's Comprehensive Development Plan and for other purposes. Item number 10, 25O 1492, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to adopt the Chastain Park Master Plan as the City of Atlanta's Master Plan for Chastain Park to incorporate the Chastain Park Master Plan into the City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan, Plan A, and for other purposes. Both of these items will need to be substituted to include the master plan.
A motion to break or substitute from Wes Morland, second by Bakhtiari. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero naes. The substitute that are before you, both of these items will need to be held because they need a public hearing.
A motion to hold by Wes Morland, second by Bakhtiari. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, six yeas, zero naes. These items are held. If there is no objection from the committee, can we take items 11, 12, and 13 as a block?
Seeing none, please proceed.
Item number 11, 25O 1493, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to accept a Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Adult Program Grant in a total amount not to exceed $759,703.00 from the Technical College System of Georgia Office of Workforce Development to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the FY26 budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations in an amount not to exceed $759,703.00. All work shall be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 12, 25O 1494, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to accept a Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Youth Program Grant in an amount not to exceed $831,233.00 from the Technical College System of Georgia Office of Workforce Development to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the FY26 budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations in an amount not to exceed $831,233.00. All work shall be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 13, 25O 1495, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to accept a Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Dislocated Worker Program Grant in the amount not to exceed $1,543,124.00 from the Technical College System of Georgia Office of Workforce Development to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the FY26 grant, FY26 budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations in an amount not to exceed All work shall be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
I'm sure we're all very excited to receive this grant money, so I will make a motion to approve. A second by Boone. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero naes. These items are favorable. That takes us to item number 14, 25O 1499, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Dozier to waive Section 15-07.006 of the Land Subdivision Ordinance of the City of Atlanta for the purposes of facilitating and acknowledgement of 1317 Rooster Street Southwest as two separate lots substantially consistent with the historic configuration and prevailing plat, pattern, and for other purposes.
A motion approved by Dozier, second by Bakhtiari. If you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero naes. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number 15, 25O 1506, an ordinance by Councilmembers Alex Wong and Mayor Norwood to amend Part III Land Development Code, Part 20, Short-Term Rentals, Section 20-1003, to clarify that the definition of short-term rental shall exclude accommodations which are not made available to the general public and which are reversed for the use, for use through a contractual agreement between the property owner and a third party, which shall be for a term, for a term exceeding 30 days and for other purposes.
Colleagues, the author has requested we hold this paper.
Second.
A motion to hold.
Second.
A second by Dozier. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero naes. This item is held. That takes us to section J, Resolutions. Item number 16, 25R 3835, a resolution by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari authorizing the contribution of a total amount not to exceed $10,000.00 to the East Atlanta Community Association to support civic interest in arts programming in Brownwood Park in East Atlanta and authorizing the chief financial officer to make payment from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
A motion to approve, I will second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero naes. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number 17, 25R 3836, a resolution by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari to amend Resolution 25R 3591 adopted by the City Council on July 1st, 2025, and approved by Operation of Law on July 16th, 2025, authorizing the contribution of a total amount not to exceed $20,646.00 to the Historic District Development Corporation to support the commercial, economic, financial, industrial, and civic interests within the Old Fourth Ward to correct the funding amount and for other purposes.
A motion to approve, I will second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero naes. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number 18, 25R 3843, a resolution by Councilmember Mayor Norwood authorizing the City of Atlanta to donate a total amount not to exceed $100,000.00 from the District Eight discretionary account to the Spring Lake Civic Association pursuant to Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta's Charter to authorize the chief financial officer or his designee to make the donation authorized hereby from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
A motion to approve by Bakhtiari, I will second. If you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero naes. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number 19, 25R 3844, a resolution by Councilmembers Marcy Caruover Street, Liliana Bakhtiari, Eche Collins, and Matt Wes Morland authorizing a donation in an, in an amount not to, in an amount of $50,000.00 to neighboring needs to support emergency home repairs for legacy residents in order to help prevent displacement pursuant to Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta's Charter and for other purposes.
A motion to approve, I will second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero naes. This item is favorable. We have no dual refer, dual referred items before us today, so that takes us to section L, Papers Held in Committee. The first of which is item number 33, 25O 1333, CDP 25023, an ordinance by Councilmember Dustin Hillis to adopt the Huff Road Multimodal Plan to amend the 2021 Comprehensive Development Plan by incorporating said plan and for other purposes. This item will need to be substituted to include the plan. The vote is closed, seven yeas, zero naes. The substitute is before you. We will need a motion to hold since we took action.
I'll make a motion to hold. A second by Bakhtiari.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, seven yeas, zero naes. This item is held in committee. That takes us to item number 39. If there's no objection, can we take items 39 through 42 and 45 as a block?
Please proceed.
Item number 39, 25O 1414, CDP 2518, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to adopt the Engly Park Neighborhood Conservation Study to amend the City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan by incorporating the reference said plan and for other purposes. Item number 40, 25O 1415, CDP 2519, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to adopt the Piedmont Heights Master Plan to amend the City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan by incorporating the reference said plan and for other purposes. Item number 41, 25O 1264, CDP 25007, a substitute ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the Land Use Planning Section of the 2025 Plan A City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesign a property located at 1138 Glenwood Avenue from the low-density residential development pattern designation to the medium-density mixed-use development pattern designation and for other purposes. Item number 42, 25O 1373, CDP 2525, an ordinance by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari as substituted by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the Land Use Planning Section of the 2025 Plan A City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to designate property located at 380 Wilkinson Drive, Atlanta, Georgia 30317 to the medium-lot single-family development pattern designation and for other purposes. Item number 45, 25O 1451, CDP 2520, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the Land Use Planning Section of the 2025 Plan A City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesign a property located at 745 Bolton Road and 749 Bolton Road Rear from the medium-lot single-family development pattern designation to the medium-density residential development pattern designation and for other purposes.
Thank you.
The last one.
I will make a motion to approve, there's a second. Second by Dozier, if you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, seven yeas, zero naes. These items are favorable. And that concludes our legislative agenda.
Thank you. Any parting words, comments from colleagues? Seeing, oh, Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our colleagues just wanted to invite the general public out to an event our office is hosting with the Atlanta VA at Dunbar Neighborhood Center in Mechanicsville as part of their annual Operation Revelry Stand Down Event. We will be doing an event for our unsheltered and homeless veterans across the region who are in need of services. There will be live music and other entertainment, there will be food, but most importantly, there will be resources supporting our homeless veteran population. Once again, we'll be at Dunbar Neighborhood Center in Mechanicsville, 477 Windsor Street Southwest, and look forward to seeing y'all tomorrow from 10 to 2.
All right, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for a great meeting. We stand adjourned.[1777.91]